So, welcome, everybody. Tonight is the four schools. We'll start with Carrie and we'll use the same process that we used the last time. Sue will keep us on task and we're more than willing, of course, to answer any questions that you have, so keeping us on time. Carrie, could you just come up and present at the table?
Anywhere.
Any place is a seat.
I'll turn to the Massway tab.
I'm sorry.
You guys could sit up here. We have some.
She's expecting.
Well, Al is out, so he's not coming.
A couple more ABC members do.
But Al's not coming, so there's a chair here.
Those chairs are more comfortable.
I would move if I were you. I'm gonna go sit over there. Can I sit over there?
We're on campus.
We'll scooch over. If you want us to stand back, we can.
So Sue, can you put us on the right page?
So we're in the red, the red tab that says Massway, yellow section, starting on page one.
To Carrie, your own.
Carrie, if you want to say anything about that page or if there's any questions. Basically, you know, as I think, coming into Massway and learning your process, walking through the budget, and taking a look, what I've been doing and what I'll continue to do is to really, throughout this year, is to get to know the ins and outs of the school and the staffing and the needs of the children housed at Massway. So, I don't know if you want me to run by line by line? No, not necessarily. Or just really offer to answer any questions as best as I can with regard to each line item. It appears to be, it's quite a straightforward budget with the majority of the funding being in salaries. So, I don't know if I've taken a look to see if there's any particular questions that I can answer. Glad to do so.
I have a question. Let's see, it'd be number, I think number 23 on supplies.
Twenty-three on page two? Going on to page three?
Yeah, leads over to page three. So I guess, I was curious about, you know, and I kind of asked, I know we have our two music teachers kind of working between the two elementary schools, and I was wondering if some of the, is there some shared budgeting between you and Mohammed in terms of some of the music supplies used for some of the musical productions and things of that nature? Trying to understand that, how that was handled.
From my understanding, and Dennis, if you want to jump in on this, feel free to, for musical equipment, meaning instruments and that sort of thing, that are bulky and heavy to move from one to another and need to get tuned and that sort of thing, the materials are housed at each school. A lot of the materials for the, it's not scripts, but the screenplays and that sort of thing, it's almost like a rent that you need, that you have to really like sign your life away to say, we're gonna use this material, it's copyrighted, and then you need to return it. So, I don't know if in your history, the materials have ever been able to be shared? Or if you're knowledgeable about that?
Almost everything in the production that happens is shared. The cost of the copyright responsibility, the cost of the musicians, the cost of the support that goes by line there, it has always been fifty, fifty percent share between the two schools.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Yes.
The, the classroom supplies per professional staff member also in that category?
Which, oh, in that same category?
Yeah, same place.
I noticed it was 125 and 100, and yet you owe 250.
What's the difference?
It's 125 in one account and 125 in another account, so it amounts to the same thing.
So you've got two different supply accounts in yours?
No, I don't have two different supply accounts. One is perishable, usable, reusable materials, and the other one is not.
Okay, so somewhere in your budget, there'll be another 125.
So you categorized it a little bit more specifically, whereas I just generalized. Thank you.
I have a question. This budget was created before we knew what the separation agreements would yield in terms of people leaving and not being replaced. So I don't know if this is the time, but at what point will we know whether we're not replacing people that may be counted in here? I guess that's my question.
Sure. November 7th, I'll present you with the resignations. And I can, on November 7th, tell you after that piece which positions I plan on replacing, which I don't. So I can close that loop on November 7th, Tom.
Okay, thanks.
One other question in the slide, since we seem to have started there. What do you mean by remainder of paper order? That's miscellaneous. You've got some in paper, but there's this other sort of general paper order that you say of 10,000.
Actually, very good question. My understanding is that we order paper at the, so district wide?
We do.
Okay.
Recycled paper.
What does this mean, remainder of paper order? In other words, you didn't quite include enough above, and so therefore there's a little bit more?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what you use for paper. Off the top of my head, I don't have that list with me, but quite a bit is paper.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not disputing that, but it's just the way it's included.
I always think just the language of it sounds like there's a whole bridge, which I can't read.
Oh, well, just throw that in.
Just throw that in. No, we don't want to do that. I can double check that for you.
Are you calling? Are you calling?
I am.
On page six, line 50, could you explain to us what professional guidance is at Massway?
Our guidance counselor at Massway is an employee who works with students in a variety of fashions, whether, sorry. Whether it's an individual counseling basis, whether it's a small group, a variety of services, whether it be emotional, social, behavioral, a lot of the students that are serviced, those are needed, the services are needed according to individualized education plans or accommodations.
So in the structure of the school, the people providing those kinds of services?
Is one person.
Is one person.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Marjorie?
Thank you very much. Sue, I think I've had a senior moment in terms of the health insurance issue. Am I correct that it would appear now that the increases are not going to be as significant as?
Right. Last week, we talked about the guaranteed maximum rate. GMR came in at 1.9 overall. This budget reflects 10%, so that adjustment was, with the dental, somewhere around 460.
Overall?
Yeah, overall, was a total of 465, 832 last week.
Okay.
And part of that was the health. But we did not make any changes in this budget yet.
And if I could just, in a somewhat related issue, does this budget now take into account all the additional funds that you have to come up with because of the change in the state lack of support for retirement?
Right, it has the new rate for retirement.
And so, and that is broken down in each category?
Each category.
Thank you.
Krista?
I have a question on page 11. I'm gonna try to get through your whole budget in one fell swoop here. I mean, if you look at that, with the number that we have in total for the difference in the health insurance and GMR, this budget's gonna end up being pretty flat, I think, when you take that into consideration, because most of the increases in here are the health insurance. But I had a question that didn't make sense to me. So, on line number 116, under the notes, it says, principals' travel, airfare, 704 nights at hotel for NSRF winter meeting. That, is that for last year's budget?
That's last year's. That needs to be changed.
Because that didn't add up?
No, that was revised.
To the 500?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is what the 15, 49, 84 for the expended for last year is?
That was last year, yes.
And then you're only asking for 500 for this year?
Correct.
For miscellaneous. Okay. It's going from 15, 49, 84 to 500?
500.
And the note is from last year's budget?
Sorry, should've tweaked.
No, that's okay. Just wanted to make sure you weren't doing something and we weren't paying for it. Like, wow, that's a lot. You're gonna be taken out of your pocket.
Just following up on that same line item, do you plan on attending any Friends workshops this year?
We're considering it with some staff members who was involved in the program, sorry, last year and while. There is some interest to continue that and to maybe broaden, whether it just be that very structured format or kind of open it up to more of a broader professional learning community type of a focus for a school.
Do you know whether or not any of those conferences are available more locally?
I haven't found any more locally there actually, and that's one of the reasons why we kind of talked about maybe stretching it out, because, number one, the travel costs is high and I think it's difficult to be able to take a certain few. And I'd rather be able to open up to a greater population. And the folks that did take part last year or last two years, I'll have to say, have had nominal explanations about it and experiences working with colleagues and really learning to listen deeper and hear from each other and give that time to provide feedback for one another. So, I've been very impressed. Did you do that? No, I didn't. So I've been really impressed with what teachers got from that group work. So I'd like to continue it, maybe with a different, broader focus.
Thank you.
I'm looking at the books and paper articles for the library, just a little bit more. It's line number 94 on page nine. Okay, just, why is it more?
It actually, last year was 12,221, and this year it's just.
But you actually approved less last year, so I'm just looking at the comparison in 2013 and 2014.
If you see on the bottom, when we went through this, we decided to make, try to make whole schools consistent. So you can see that Mohammed, so we balanced it out.
That was my other question. Where's TG?
Tim Galing. Tim made that note. So we know who did that, so we can blame him if it's wrong. No. So he's good at putting his initials.
TG, date 20.
Anything he made a change on.
Was that the date he made the change? Oh, okay.
We tried to do that.
Glad you asked. Okay. I didn't know.
I think that point, just if I can interject, what we tried to do is keep the Mohammed School and the Massway School relatively, I won't say the word equal, not exactly equal, but we certainly equalized them so that there would be consistency between the two schools. And we did the same thing between the middle school and the high school. So, numbers will look relatively consistent between the two elementary schools and then consistent between the elementary and the high school. And we tried to use last year's actual expenditures as our base as opposed to the proposed budget. So lots of times, you'll see the number go down. Once in a while, we'll see a number go up.
But that has no relationship to the student population?
It does, actually. We used Lisa's numbers to try to operationalize a per-student amount.
Right.
And again, it's not, as Sue and I were talking today, it's not perfect yet, but it's a big leap toward being able to articulate to the school board, ABC committee, and the public what we're spending per student. And it's been much more random in the past, and so we say, you know, it's approximately $90 per student, that was our goal. And I think in most cases, we hit it, but it's not exact science yet. Another year and we'll have fine-tuned that so that, you know, we'll be able to predict what our supply costs are, our library costs are, and so forth, based on a formula. But we tried to use the Long Range Planning Committee numbers to support that.
So the numbers won't actually match between the two schools?
No, but you'll see that they're almost, they're as close to being a match as you can get without being exact. And there were variations and enough nuance over the history that we felt that was a good first step, and then, you know, another year, we'll get it down to an actual algorithm. Marjorie?
Thank you. Equalizing on, per capita?
Right, based on the enrollment of the schools. So Carrie has, I'm gonna guess, what did we use, Carrie? 314?
315.
315? And we use 384, Dennis? So you'll be able to do the math and see, oh, well, that's why Massway has a little bit less, or that's why the high school has a little bit more. We also used a different number for the high school. Not a big difference, but as Todd would tell you, the cost of equipping, you know, a textbook at the high school or the equipment to support programs like shop are far more expensive than supporting the programs at the elementary school. So we had to create a differential that reflected those courses that use expendables, art, industrial arts, and so forth.
And then how does that, how does the middle school fit into that?
Middle school fits into the high school profile because they have shop and they have FCS and they have, you know, the kind of court, similar courses to what the high school has, not exactly the same, but similar. So we compared the middle school to the high school as opposed to comparing them to the elementary, because it would have been too low to compare them to the elementary because of the courses that Jay runs at the middle school.
And, so that's the plan, and the budget's a plan. We understand that. But as the money is expended, are the limits applied within the school, within each of the individual schools?
Yes. If I'm following your question, the answer would be yes.
Thank you.
So if, for example, you know, we set a number for Todd and then Todd came in and said, Jim, you know, we underestimated our shop costs. I want to be able to shift within my budget, supply lines to that endeavor, the answer would be yes, absolutely. But you'll have to adjust someplace else. So he has to stay within his budget, but he can move his budget around to his needs. So wood costs go up unexpectedly, food costs, those kinds of things that he has to buy for his programs, then he has the flexibility of working his budget, and he'll bring Sue into the loop when he does that.
And is this the first year that you've tried to do this?
Me?
The institution?
The institution, I would say, we don't know, because there isn't enough institutional memory left to know whether it is or not, but it is something that I've done for 20 years. What's that, Dennis?
And my memory is failing.
Yeah, so I would, I can only speak to the fact that applying a predictable pattern of behavior on the schools where if a community member says, how much do you spend on supplies? And we can say, X number of dollars, the community member generally thinks, okay, they have an answer to why that number exists. It's pretty, it's much more informative that you were able to answer with a cogent answer than to say, you know, that's the number we've always used. So that's the rationale behind it.
If I could just ask one more question, I don't want to belabor this, but again, so that's the plan. How will you track the adjustments that you make during the course of the year so that when this group sits down next year to plan the budget, it sees different usage patterns between the two elementary schools, for example? Or how one particular category tended to be underfunded in all four units or overfunded, whatever?
Sure. Sue keeps a pretty accurate record now of adjustments in the budget. She has, you know, notes that she keeps. And then as we sit down with the principals, she'll say, you know, we have to remember that we did this year or that last year. And in the conversation of building the first draft, the budget, all of that comes out. I will tell you that Sue is a stickler for, and I am as well, applying expenses to the line that is the right line to apply expenses to. So, in a given year, if you see us overexpend, say, the supply line, you'll see the supply line overexpend it, because the best way of tracking real cost is for Sue to maintain the books the way they actually are used. So we will do that, which means that someplace in a particular principal's budget or a director's budget, they have to compensate for that over expenditure, and that's where Sue keeps her notes. So we're very, I think Sue has done a really good, great job in the last two years of getting that kind of pattern of behavior under her belt and under the system's belt, and it's the same pattern that I've used in 20 years of running a central office. I worked for a gentleman, a superintendent at one point, who would buy supply account, his supplies, say, for the school. He didn't have enough money, he would apply it to the tire account, because that's where he had money. The problem with that is that you don't really know how much you spent on tires, you don't really know how much you spent on supplies. And I worked for him, and he lost his job because of those kinds of behaviors of shuffling dollars around. And so that was the beginning of my career, and I vowed I would never do that. You know, if I have to face the music that a line is over expended, I'd just as soon face it straight out, and people can ask, like you all are tonight, why is that line over expended? And we would have the record of why it was over expended, with the understanding that we would never over expend the entire budget. So there has to be adjustments made by the various administrators reflecting their budgets. So if they over expend someplace, they have to under expend someplace else.
Do you, do you make monthly reports, quarterly reports?
Monthly.
Monthly. And are those online?
We, it's just, right now, it's just a basic report. I've gone from a couple of different formats, but we can certainly post those online, it's just generic totals, not line by line, certainly not this report line by line. This is available line by line. I run it quite often, but.
We do a summary sheet based on the major categories on the budget. So the finance committee gets a report on the supply account, the personnel accounts, you know, special ed accounts, transportation and so forth. And Sue projects where we are in terms of our budget as far as the health of our budget in terms of expenditures versus revenue. And so we do that every month. So it's easy enough, it's easy enough to put that report up. It's only maybe two pages, one page.
We got it to one page, yeah.
I don't know how the, our committee feels about it, but I'd like to put on our list the encouragement of that report being online and available to anyone who would choose to.
I will say that generally, whenever the ABC, Sue does give us an update of the status of things. So we generally have had that one, you know, after the kind of meeting we haven't had as regular meetings as we do. But I think discussions are taken.
Again, I'm concerned, I'm interested in making sure that every effort is made to at least have the information available to the community. And if they choose not to take advantage of it, that's their choice, but that we've done what we can to make sure that people can follow.
Does that report have a name? Barry?
They call it Budget Update. Budget Update. I don't have one with this update.
Krista?
This is more a general question, but it's on this budget for line item 120. Are all our cell phones for the school under the same plan or the same period?
They are under the same plan, and what I am going to do in the upcoming budget is just get rid of all the cell phones and just go to a stipend basis. We spend a lot of time going out to bid and acquiring a bid and then choosing, you know, phones, and it's a lot of management time that's getting wasted on this issue. So we're going to go to a straight $45 a month as part of somebody's income to handle the cell phones, and we never have to go through all of the work that Josh goes through and Sue goes through in dealing with these things. It is a nuisance issue easily handled by a stipend, and that's the goal that we will have for next year. Sue has cut down the number of cell phones in the district by about a third in her tenure, and I said, well, let's get rid of them all, because they really are a nuisance for her office and for the IT office.
This may, I'm sorry. This may be dealt with in the November 7th meeting, but as I read this, the, you have 21 FTEs, regular education program for Massway for 315 students, and only 1.5 more, 22.5 for Mohammed with 383 students. So you really have a discrepancy, a difference in terms of, by my calculation, the 1 to 15 ratio at one school, 1 to 17 in the other. I'm wondering whether that's gonna be evened out in terms of reassignment or kind of staffing?
Yeah, we'll have that for you on the 7th as well as part of the finalized resignations.
Got a phone-related question as well. So the regular phones at Massway, I think last year, that system was replaced. Is that right? So the line item here is 18, I'm sorry, it's 119, it's on page 11. Line item for regular phones, 16, sorry, 18,684. That's 51 phone lines. Does that mean 51 phone lines to the outside world, that, you know, 51 concurrent calls could be made in and out of the school? The cost for phones in Mohammed is dramatically lower. $3,384. Is this system costing us way too much money?
Yeah, we're actually looking at that. It's VOIP, it's supposed to be E-rate eligible, so we should get 50% of that back.
When we told last time, we had a conversation, that we hadn't got a penny from the feds on that one.
That's correct. Not this, the last two years, no.
So that's a lot of green dollars going out the door for a promise of a future check.
Rob, why don't we save that question for when we have Josh here?
Yes, sir.
And IT, and then probably he can give us a more informed answer.
Getting back to the point on the interim budget report, I think we have to be careful what you're looking at when you look at an interim report. You and Congress salaries?
Yes.
100% of it?
Yes.
That's gonna look all expended?
Yes.
At the first interim. The other parts are gonna have line items that get unexpended completely because of the timing, right? And do you encounter purchase orders before the items come in?
In some cases, but not all. So what you're saying is, in other words, percentage-wise, it's not gonna look very equal.
Correct.
So you have to be careful with that. That's correct.
It's gonna raise a lot of questions, and it's gonna take a lot of explanation. That's all I'm saying. We all, you have to set up interim budgets in effect if you really want to find out how you're doing for the waypoints along the way to see what any given line item should look like after three months, six months, and eight months, because you just can't, other than that, you can't make any inferences at all, really, except by line items. So I'll say, if you're gonna go to an interim report, make it public, be ready to explain what people are looking at, or put it in a sophisticated format that does what you want. You want to find out how much money is being expended against each line item versus what was planned. And in the process, you may create more work for Sue than it's worth. That's all I'm saying.
I do that anyways.
It's just a matter of whether we look at it.
Guys, do you mind if I invite Dennis up with Carrie? Because you like Rob's question, jump buildings, it might as well have both of them up here. If that's okay?
That's good.
Just in case that happens.
You can bring the comfy chair, Dennis. Yep, you're all set.
No.
I just wanted to ask one other question that might be just minute. Because maybe I had picked it up when I went through the Mohammett budget. But I know there was under line 26, by books and period. Is there a budget for class, or a certain, for, I'm trying to think, class? Or is it just whatever it is?
Basically, the way this has been done in the past, that I'm...
I know.
Is it's not, it's not by grade, yeah. It's not by grade level. It's really by need, and by materials associated per grade level. But not specific to second grade only, is a lot of this, and third grade is a lot of this.
Or not per classroom?
Yeah.
So, there's nothing short of budget at that level. It's just whatever they say they need, at this point.
So, are we ready to go to Mohammett?
Yep.
Well, obviously, my, to me, it's obvious anyway. My focus in this budget has been trying to keep an eye on enrollment. And certainly, the Long Range Planning Committee's projections have certainly stabilized me, and kept me logical, as opposed to emotional, in this whole thing. Because, you know, it seems like we're overflowing with kids. And yet, the Long Range Planning Committee's projections are pretty accurate. And so, it tells me that we have a job to do. One of the first things the superintendent said to me when we started was that we need to look at all the options that are available, to try to alleviate the enrollment issues at Mohammett and Mastway. And I know I've been through this before, 15 years ago, and we made, and the roles were reversed. And I think that's, for kids, it's really important to keep the class sizes reasonable. And we've done that, with the support of the board, and with the support of several superintendents. And I think we can continue to do that. And so, I don't know what else to say, except I'll answer any questions that you have.
Krista?
So...
I'll try to, anyway.
So, this isn't really a question about your budget, but it's a question about what you just said. So, 15 years ago, 1997, was the housing boom that started to inflate the housing prices that were now decreasing. But at that time, that's the year I bought my house. So, I know exactly where the houses were being built. And the houses were being built largely in Lee and Durham at that time. Which is why the population at Mastway would be so directly affected. And now, the only place we have left to build theoretically, or actually, is in Madbury. And for the foreseeable future, that's going to be true. Because most of the land that is free in Lee is under conservation easement. So, that's not going to be built on, ever. And there's really not a whole lot of space in Durham that could be acquired for a housing development. But in Madbury, that's not true. In Madbury, there's lots of places to build, or lots of places that could be acquired to put in housing developments. So, I don't necessarily see the pendulum swinging backwards. Which, the only way that that happens, if people who live in Lee and Durham, that attend Mast, that are in the Mastway district, sell their houses to families, younger families. And we know that that's not necessarily the trend these days. So, I think that it makes sense that we, you know, understand that it swings back and forth. However, we may be at a point now where it's not going to swing back. It's just going to swing forth. And the longer we, well, the longer we ignore it, the worse the pendulum will swing in the other direction. So, I don't disagree that it's something that we need to take into consideration, but I think it's important that we don't ignore it for a whole lot longer.
I'd like to ask about, I guess it's for both the elementary schools, about, there's a reduction in for field trips, the whole curriculum.
A reduction in?
Field trips. So, number 134, from the norm, and I also believe it went down at Mastway, a slight I know that there are some very, very good field trips, that are very, very education, highly educational.
What page are you on?
It's the last page.
I'm on the last page of your budget, page 14, of 14.
We're actually going to change. It shouldn't have stayed the same. We've cut it as $10 per child.
Yeah, we adjusted the number of children to 385.
Okay, I wanted to ask that, I wasn't sure. And then, I do know that we have, obviously, incredibly dedicated teachers. And I know there's some teachers who actually take money out of their own purses to facilitate...
Well, I get curious with them if they do.
Well, I'm just going to put on a, you know, I'm really, I really feel like there's some things that are incredibly valuable for students. And, you know, we look at this $39 million budget. It seems incredible to me that we can't, we should be able to continue doing some of these really important things. And it's, because it's directly affecting children. And, you know, I look at some items, and I say, okay, definitely, we could, you know, maybe we should, you know, tighten a belt. But when I think about, you know, your kid has one chance to be in that grade, and get that experience. And I just, I just want to see what we could do. I mean, how much are we really talking about, in the scheme of things? Because it could make a huge difference for that child.
Well, most every classroom does at least one field trip, some two. And the allotment this year, between the budgetary, budgeted amount, and what the PTO donates, allows for $275 for each classroom to spend in the way they want to. That usually doesn't pay for one field trip, because of the bus, the cost of buses. So, your issue is a good one.
Yeah, I'd like to make a request. I would like to know, you know, realistically, if we were to, we were to pay, how much are we looking at, increase-wise?
I can get that information for you, because we totally, the amount spent in field trips...
I mean, I'm not talking about, like, adding a bunch of water park fun times. I'm talking about these real educational trips that tie into the curriculum.
That should be easy to get.
I would like to know what the differential is, and see if it might be something...
I have all that information, I just don't have it tonight.
Don't have it in your head?
Obviously, after today's show.
Sorry.
The real cost of field trips.
The real cost of field trips. So, I think it's being subsidized by teachers, by PTO parents. And then, it kind of goes to another question. You know, every year, parents get letters from teachers asking for Kleenexes, boxes of Kleenexes, and wipes. You know, how much does that cost? I mean, that's, like, we don't ask, you know, we don't get, we don't have to bring in toilet paper, I guess that's good. But, you know what I'm saying? Like, at what point are we nickel and diming certain things that are just so baseline? Now, again, I recognize we're in tough times, but I look at some of these things as very, very personal to the child, and I would like to make it a priority.
Well, they're all choices.
Right. So, how much would it cost to provide Kleenexes at our school?
I have no idea.
On an annual basis? And wipes? I would like to know.
Well, if we don't do it, it'll be a guess. If we do do it, then we can estimate it. So, we'll get, we'll see what we can get you, Megan.
It's just a pet peeve, sorry. It's just, thank you.
Could I follow up on that? I don't have children in the school, although I have grandchildren in other school districts, and I know about the lists that they get at the beginning of the year. The point you make is very important. Because the point that you're making is, the way we're looking at the budget is myopically. We're looking at the budget as compared with what we did last year, or the year before. We're not assessing in any way, is money generally going where it should go, in order to have the best quality educational opportunity possible? Not in, you know, not in a perfect world. But I'm just wondering if there, if as we look at numbers going from expended in 212, to approved in 213, to proposed in 14, whether some of those categories should be revisited, as to whether the money should be spent in X way, rather than Y. And to do that is, would be so unbelievably painful and complicated. And yet, where in this process do we analyze whether the money, we're spending hard-earned money in the best possible way?
Krista?
That's not our job. It's not our job. Because that's their job. That's what they're doing. That's how they come up with this budget. They look at what they need, in order to deliver the education to our children, that is the best education possible. Our job is not to determine how many pencils to buy, or what books to buy. I don't know that. I'm not a third-grade teacher. I'm not a second-grade teacher. I'm not a first-grade teacher. I am a businessperson. So, I look at the numbers, and I determine, you know, whether or not something looks completely out of place, that there would be putting money into a category just to inflate the budget, so that they'd have extra money to spend at the end of the year. It's not my job to determine what makes the education of these children the best education. That's the teachers' and the administrators' job. And that's the budget that they've presented to us. And so, we have to trust that they've put the time and effort into this budget, which I do, to determine that this is the best education for our children. And that if there's something that's not in this budget, that they think we need in order to provide a better education, they're going to tell us what that is. And they do. And they say, you know, I need this, in order to improve the education, and this is why. But I believe that this budget was carefully constructed by the teachers and the administrators of our district, to provide a quality education for our children. And not to just blow smoke and mirrors, to spend money. But I think by questioning that, it's questioning the intention of our teachers and our administrators. And I don't, I'm not going to micromanage them. They did their job. They gave us a budget that educates our children to the best of their ability. And if there was something that was missing, they would ask us for it. And I would hope that they would.
If I could just reply, because I think you feel very strongly about this, and I...
Yeah, I have three children in the district, of course I feel strongly about it.
Well, and I respect that. I think that's, respect that. I think perhaps you might have misheard me. I was not challenging the teachers, the principals, or the superintendent. What I'm talking about is the process that we expect the school officials to go through. And my question would be, if they were to come in and say, in their budget, that they're making a dramatic change, even a somewhat dramatic change, moving things out of one category, and into another category, do we have a system that would support that creativity, and that kind of decision-making? Or by looking, as we look, at what is the difference between the spending this year, and the spending that last year? Are we putting pressures on those very people who are supposed to be developing the best possible education, to keep on doing things the same way? So, I don't think that you and I differ at all in our shared concern to provide for the community, and I'm here as a representative of the community, to provide the support for not only the school board, but also for the administration. And is it possible for them to break out of a box, in a way? Or are we, in this system, keeping things in line?
Can I try to answer that? It's already happened. This year, where Carol and Jim have put these two elementary schools together, for the first time, in a meaningful way. In terms of assessment, in terms of equity in both schools. And what you're talking about is what they have begun the process of doing. And it's really exciting for some, an old guy like me. Because I've wanted this for half a century, it seems. And it's going to work.
We have a question here.
Sue, you may have answered this already. But in the sheet you provided for us, that shows expended, approved, proposed, proposed a difference. And we see a difference at Mastway of 112,000, 188 at Mohammett, and so forth. Is that, the majority of that staff?
Talking about this sheet here.
Yeah.
The difference between the two schools?
No, the difference between the last year's, the last budget we approved, and this one that we're looking at. Those differences, is that, is that largely salaries and benefits?
Salaries and benefits, for the most part. And you're going to have different levels of seniority at different schools. So, you can't really compare them, apples to apples. You might have 20 teachers that are higher on the salary schedule, than 20 teachers, you know?
I ask that question because I think it's important for us, as we go forward, to recognize that while we're looking for things that we would like clarification on, that the difference is largely something out of our control.
I think one of the interesting things that you're seeing is that we're going to be in the process of implementing Common Core. And so, we're kind of, in some degree, with regards to curriculum, we're kind of in this holding pattern, a little bit, as people start to really understand. And Megan, you brought up a good point about, what about the field trips? And how do they tie in to provide another, another opportunity for students to get an experience, deepen their understanding of the content? And I think that's important, too. And one of the things I've been telling everyone, as far as how we move forward with the, with the content, and learn about the new standards, is that we need to monitor. We need to do a better job at monitoring and capturing information and evidence of what we value, and what really works well, versus something that was okay. But we continue to do it, because that's kind of what we do. And so, one of the things that we've been beginning to collect is this information. And I've been telling teachers, if there's something you value, and you couldn't imagine your, your grade level of being without it, then if you've been doing it for a number of years, and you have yet to collect that information, whether it's a student survey, or getting feedback, you know, what was your experience? Or even from parents, to try and capture some of the things that brought value, and add credibility to continuing to do something, versus continuing to do it because we've always done it. And I think that's a, that's a very intentional mindset to be in, to be systematic. Not in an overwhelming way, but to get in the habit of mind of monitoring and evaluating what we do. So, if we're letting go of field trips, or certain experiences, or materials, is it because we determined that it wasn't of value? Or did we just lose it in the budget, but it was really valuable? And those are the things that we've been trying to start, as Dennis had started to mention, about being more mindful and evidence-based of the things that we want to keep, and we feel strongly about. So that when it does come time, and people do question why something is in the budget, or not in the budget, or I foresee next year's budget, when teachers get a real great handle on what their, the Common Core will be, that there will be additions to the budget. And that, but there'll be evidence behind those additions, with support of why they need it. And I, and I love that. I love that they're coming in with evidence base, and reasoning for why, and the added value it would bring to their content. And I think that, I would assume, would sit well with most people, to know. And I think that I would assume would sit well with, with most people to know. And then a process in place to help us know over time, is it being tweaked? Does it need to be altered? You need something in its place. I think we do it in business all the time, but I think sometimes we lose that a little bit in education because we're just caught up, you know, we're caught up in the day-to-day.
I want to get back to your question, though. I think it is true that you did develop this budget within a funding limit. And that, so you did not have the flexibility to ask for more than, than, that would go over that limit. So it was, in fact, in your presentations, I'm sorry, Mr. Lastman, your presentations, you had sort of a wish list of what you'd like to have, but you didn't put them in the budget. My question is, as we go back and save, kind of, whatever the money is on insurance, if we then go back to the list and see what we might have put in there, if it added value, if it's field trips or Kleenex or whatever. But my impression is, to the extent that a funding limit is placed on you administrators when you developed the budget, you were not able to add to the budget what things you might have wanted that you felt that would add quality. I'm not making a, I think that's a question.
There's some truth to that, but the directive was if you need, if you want to make a proposal that is different, then we have to finance it by stop, stopping the pursuance of something else. So it's not, and a lot of what's happening in this budget is moving funds around to different spots to be more efficient and effective district-wide. Which is, I mean, I like a lot of it, as long as there's a certain amount of autonomy. And by autonomy, I don't mean independence in each school. My definition of autonomy is when you, when you choose to act, that you think about what is happening around you, what is happening in the other schools, and what is happening in the district. In the, we've been more like four different islands for a long, long time. And that is what's changing. And that is coming out of a real tight box that we were in for a long time. Does that help?
It's very important because the New Hampshire way is to spend a lot less money but give people spending it the flexibility-
Yeah.
-to move it. That's the UNH path.
Yeah.
And it's, I'm, I'm hard to hear that, that if you've got the whole budget on the table when you're doing that. But to answer your question, Marjorie, there was not room for a lot of innovation because you were under a funding limit because the school board had voted to have a level budget. Right? Didn't you?
Well. I'm such a fundamental-
I'm just trying to get it straight, what happened.
-public educator that I don't believe of, when a kid comes through the door, that a parent should have to pay a red cent other than their taxes. Now, that's pretty extreme. But if we're going to have field trips over time, then we've had to violate that principle. I know my stepkids live in a nearby district and two years ago, my wife and I went out to buy stuff, $175 a kid. That's not a public school. When kids walk through the door, they should not have to pay a red cent because we're a public school. And if Jimmy has parents who can afford it, that's fine. But what if there's a parent who can't afford it? Public school is for every child. And I take that really seriously and will till the day I walk out double doors of Moheramet. Yes.
100% agree with you, Dennis. On the other side of the coin is, of course, if you can't afford to live here because the taxes are going up, there's a balance, right?
Yes, yes.
And I also wanted to address the, the, you know, the, the reduction, the GMR, the lower end of that GMR, which is-
What's GMR?
Guarantee maximum rate.
Guarantee maximum rate, health insurance. So the increase is not as much as we think.
Okay.
Which was good because that means that the 4.9% increase that we were looking at, you know, staring at in the face is now going to be a lot lower. It's not a windfall, that's not a windfall, though. That's money we don't, you know, that's money we're going to have to go, I'm fine. So, you know, just caution about, you know, saying that we can go back and start spending that.
And as, as administrator, when I have a choice-
The superintendent is jumping up and down here.
Don't mean to step on your tongue, Dan.
No, go ahead.
I think, you know, the heart of this issue is, you know, how do you decide what's important and what's not important? And the fact that we don't have a strategic plan in place that the board can bounce up again, so the ABC committee can bounce up again, so the community can bounce up again and say, well, that's why we're spending money in world languages, because that's a priority of the district. We don't have that. And, you know, by the time we do this again, I'm hopeful that we will have that. Because it answers the questions that all of you are going round and round on. And the, you know, the reality is, sorry, Dennis and Rob, as a public school system, you will never provide every single thing that every single teacher wants for every single child. There's always, you know, a, a place where you can't go. You can't spend without thinking about the consequences of that spending. And I think that's where Rob was going. You know, the board had made a guideline, directive, however you want to say it, before I got here. The, the budget I presented you clearly blew the doors off their guideline.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I didn't present a budget that is zero growth because I couldn't. The reality is, I had to face what we thought was going to be a 10% increase in health insurance, the needs that we have in capital improvement, and the costs associated with our contracts and so forth and so on. And so the budget you have is $1.8 million higher than what the board that retired last wanted. So, you know, I presented the budget that we had, and creativity and innovation are critically important to me. And for this district, structure is creative. It's been, as Dennis articulated, four different units and how many different divisions doing their own thing and never tying anything together. So sometimes, it seems like when you're doing things that's not creative, like creating a structure for a district that hasn't had one, that's what we're doing that's creative this year. The work that Carolyn is doing with staff related to Common Core is incredibly innovative. And for the first time, we'll be able to put data next to our feelings. You know, we're, we feel like we're a great district. By all accounts, we are a great district. But with the work that Carolyn's doing with staff, we'll be able to put data next to that and say, you see, we are as good as we think we are. Or we are pretty good, but we have some work to do in these areas. And then when we get to the technology presentation, you'll see yet again, you know, innovation and creativity. I, as a superintendent, said to the principals, if you have something that you want to present in staffing that's not in the current budget, present it on a different sheet of paper. And then we can evaluate its, its merit. I don't think we're, we're understaffed in our district. I would argue that in some cases, we're overstaffed, in fact. But I also think that by creating an interdependent structure between the four units and the divisions, we actually will be able to utilize money more wisely and creatively. Because up until this point, we couldn't say whether that was a good cost or whether that was effective programming or whether that was the place we should be spending our money. We're not saying that we can this year. But as we work together this year and next year and the year after, I think Marjorie's and Krista's points are, are able, will be able to be articulated in not just how we feel, but proven by the data and the needs of the youngsters. As we move towards smarter balance, we're going to have to innovate in, in technology. We cannot leave our technological infrastructure the way it is. We can't have the system run as independently as it does. It has to be centralized. And for, for us to do that, we have to do things that the system is not used to, where we start saying, is this the best value for a dollar? You know, when we come to issues like Kleenex, quite honestly, I know nothing about it. And, you know, so now I do. And we'll make some assessment on that and decide whether that's, you know, something we should be spending money on. But most importantly, on field trip, more importantly to me, on field trips are, are those field trips useful for the curriculum that's being taught in that class? Are they non-repetitive? In other words, we're not doing them in first grade and third grade and fifth grade, that, you know, children get a snapshot of curriculum through a field experience that's meaningful and supports Common Core? And again, you know, there's been sort of a, you know, I'm going to do this this year, I'll do this next year, and, and how does that all tie in? And so the key to the work that we're doing that doesn't show up in numbers like this is the work that Carolyn and the principals and the directors with Sue were doing in terms of trying to make this a cohesive whole. So for people in the room who are very data-driven, they could say, well, gee, this, this, you're only spending $89 for supplies for Carrie, but you're spending 91 for Dennis. You know, that's the kind of variance that might exist, whereas before it might be 110 for Dennis and 17 for Carrie. There was just no rationale behind it. So as you see structures, these are the kind of structures that help people who are not directly involved in the education and the operations of the district say, oh, okay. They, they spent $42,000 last year and they're proposing, they, they propose 46. So do we really need 47 or should we go back to 42? Because all of the stuff that Dennis carries in his head and Carrie carries in his head and Jay and, and Todd and Carolyn, Sue, the administrative staff and the teachers can't be articulated in numbers. But this is what, this is the framework that we're using to communicate and hopefully it's, you know, at least rational. It may not expose us for our creativity and innovativeness, but it does expose us for being people with common sense. People can say, oh, yeah, okay, I can see where that number came from. But is that the right number? Truthfully, four months into the job, I don't know yet. And, you know, ask me 16 months into the job, I'll have a much stronger opinion. And 24 months into the job, I'll have that much more stronger opinion. But right now, I think these numbers do make sense. And so we, we did and we didn't, I hate to say this to the board, we did and didn't pay attention to them in terms of present a budget that's zero. They needed to see the budget that we, we were faced with. And, you know, it's the, it's the age-old issue of, of maintaining the excellence and the high regard this district has with the ability to pay for it. And the recession has run havoc with this, these three communities, just like it did across the country. And so we, we're getting taxpayer pressure, but we're also getting pressure not to lose what makes us who we are. And so, you know, whether we've done that or not, I think we have. But, you know, the proof will be in the pudding a year from now. And we'll say, yeah, we didn't put enough money here, we should have put more money over here and, but we'll learn that together, all of us. You know, it's, that's the part of not having a long history in the district. I can't articulate for you that that was the right number yet, but I will be able to. So I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing about field trips?
Okay.
Four years ago, there was no money for field trips. So there have been some inroads made. And there was also something else that I'm quite proud of that the previous superintendent instituted, which wasn't popular at the time, but really rationed, limited the amount of money that we could ask families for. And I think that was, that was a really smart move because it moved us closer to financing the field trips in a way that is, that makes them part of the school curriculum. And at the same time, does not demand, in some cases, parents faking over $80 or $90. If you have one kid, that's fine. But what if you've got three or four kids? No, it just, that, it was intolerable at the time. And we lived through it. And most families in this district could afford it. Some couldn't.
And?
I mean, I appreciate all this discussion, and I don't want to downplay it by coming back to the level of detail.
Come back.
Because we've been talking about what's similar between the two budgets and how you try to integrate them. And a question has come to mind as I looked at the budget down to the level of detail that maybe it shouldn't have. But I see, when we talk about staff being such a big part of the budget, there is an intervention specialist at Moheramet that's not at Massway. So that was a difference, and I didn't understand that. And the other one, a difference between the two was the math coach resources that is there, is that only, is that, is that a shared resource and it's just put in the Massway budget? So those were-
Let me tackle them both. The math, the math resources are new item in the budget. We have a math coach that is shared by both schools, 50%.
That's what I thought, right, right. But that's, I don't know how the personnel-
The second one was more important, but it slipped me.
Intervention specialist.
The intervention specialist?
Yes, yes. The intervention specialist. Title I. We lost Title I four years ago. Which meant that the support that children got, particularly in the early years, would not have been there for kids who were struggling. And so the board at the time authorized the two intervention specialists.
Two, right, but only at Mass, Moheramet?
Yes, because Massway still has Title I.
Thank you.
How does that work?
Excuse me?
It's based off of free and reduced lunch.
In fact, next year, we may not have Title I at all.
Yeah. So it'll be back next year.
Well, when we get to the staffing piece, we'll talk about that as well.
But the, the math, math coach therefore shows up as part-time.
50%.
Under the total number of teachers.
50%, 50%. 49, 51.
Don't go to that level.
Megan?
I have a question. Do we offer a stipend to our music teacher for doing the orchestra at the elementary school?
Yes.
Where is that, I just-
It's, it's in the, is a line item for clubs.
Okay.
And I, I don't know the exact figure. It's a per session amount that she gets from, at the end of each section, she'll give me an invoice and then I'll respond to it.
Okay.
I, I don't know the exact amount.
We'll get that for you, Megan.
Yeah, I just, you know, when we, we look at the other schools, we have a lot of stipend funds for, you know, like musical productions, the high school and other things. And I, you know, I see, I just want to make sure we're being equitable in that area.
I think it's on line 57.
I think that's a wonderful program.
Yes, it's really-
It has a lot of potential.
I watch it. It's totally impressive.
I'm sorry, where is it?
Line 57.
Oh, okay.
Stipend for directors, stipend for assistant directors, is that what you're talking about?
You know, true.
I don't know if that's it.
Yeah.
I can't tell because it doesn't say what's for each, etc.
While we're on the subject of equity, a question came up in our meeting. My grandson started doing his homework at dinner the other night on his iPad. My question is, is there penetration of technology such that every single family has access to the technology they need to do the curriculum in a way it's currently configured in school system?
I think there are two families at Moheramet who don't. And we provide them paper copies of what, that is, is the equivalent. And I'm also trying to get them a computer and a $9.99-
Comcast.
Comcast.
Through Comcast, they're offering a special rate.
How about yours?
I'd have to look into that to get specific.
That's, that's a big disadvantage for those families that can't afford-
Absolutely.
And they, they don't get the sense of learning alone either. I'm not being critical.
Yeah.
We ought to provide free technology, just like we provide free field trips-
Interesting, I was talking-
If it's part of their curriculum.
I was talking with the math coach today about this issue. And she is going to create some time early in the morning where the families can bring those kids in early.
Can you bring my grandson in, too, so he doesn't do it at dark?
I think the real answer-
Thank you.
But the real answer is no, we don't. Because we have very dated equipment, new equipment, we have equipment that's used by students, equipment that can't be used by students. So, you know, Dennis's example of Moheramet doesn't reflect the total district.
And?
What can we do to rectify that problem? Do we have to appropriate money to buy computers for students that have a demonstrated need?
I have a proposal for you all to consider when we do the technology budget.
Thank you.
And?
Question for, for both of you. Megan brought up extracurricular activities. We have a string program at, at Moheramet?
A string program? There's a str, there's a, a small string program that the music teacher has created that includes both Massway and Moheramet.
So it does include both schools?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Is that program...
Yes.
Actually, and is, does it receive, is it being well-attended? And if not, is it...
You know, I don't know what the numbers are, I haven't asked.
So I guess my question is, does it receive adequate funding? Is it's, is the...
It's the same question.
That's my question. Is it equitable with other...
No, that's, but I'm, but that's, that's what I want to know.
You know, I don't even know what...
If it's being held back because either there's not enough resources being devoted, then...
You know, she's got more energy than five people.
Well, that's not the resource I'm talking about.
She is being paid, that's the important thing. Yes.
Well, I think, yeah, no, I think, I think the program is, also, I think there's at least one middle school student taking part in that program. And I know that it's a really great cooperation with the teacher and UNH staff as well. You know, that's, I think that's a really, another important piece, and I think down the road, I think that's something we want to try to embrace more and more in our district, those types of cooperations. My understanding, though, are that the students who are in that program, it's not like the band program, it happens after school, and it's not like they have a teacher teaching that instrument. You know, most of these children, I would assume all these children are having private lessons or lessons outside of Mohearmen in order to, to be able to perform, so...
So that's self-limiting.
It is limiting, so if you don't have, you know, so I'm paying, I know my daughter's in it, she's, has private lessons, and then she takes part.
Do you know how many kids are in it?
You know...
I'll check it out.
I think it's maybe, I want to say like between sixteen, twenty, maybe.
That's what it was last year.
Yeah.
We'll get that numbers to you. So we still have the middle school and high school, or any other questions for Carrie or Dennis?
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, Jay and Todd, why don't you just come up together and, so it doesn't, they can see you both and you can answer questions related to Jay first, and then Todd, and I'm sure there'll be questions across buildings.
No, I just...
It's hot in here.
I feel hot.
It is hot.
I don't have any water.
Go get a drink.
No, it's all right. I don't want to get up. I might walk out the door.
Can I ask a question?
Green cap. Yes, you may.
Okay. Sue, this paper that you sent out with the breakdown by Gary or whatever, location, was this done before, with, with consideration of the reduced GMR or not?
No, that was before.
Okay. So then I have a question for Jay.
Go for it, we like tough questions.
All right, so I went through, and this is actually highlighting you, actually. So I went through and added up briefly the difference between last year and this year for health insurance and staffing. That increase was three hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Your total difference from this year to last year is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that's a difference of, now I'm gonna have to do math in my head, which is always very dangerous, but about eighty-five thousand dollars.
Eighty-six thousand.
Okay.
Eighty, I was pretty close. Anyway, who cares?
So what did you take out of your budget to accommodate for that increase?
You know, it's several different things, like we've already made, Dr. Morse and I already made a reduction. We had a tutor resign at the start of this year, and working together, we decided not to fill that position due to we didn't see the student need at this time. And then just if you go through the budget, just, you know, shifting, you know, just cutting some costs incrementally, I mean, I think over the past three or four years, we've, you know, reduced costs in general. That's pretty, pretty much it. I don't have any very specific things. Wow, I cut this large amount of money, but if you look across, there's a, there's a lot of negative lines across the middle school budget, but there's some positive lines too.
Thank you.
I have a question, it kind of, it overlaps with technology. I know that in your school, you really welcome students bringing in their own technology.
Yeah.
Do you feel that that has had any budgetary impact, or you just don't even try to quantify that? I mean, in terms of your, your budget and needs, when you work with Josh on technology?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's had a positive impact for students. What we're seeing now is students start to bring their own laptops, or iPads, or specific Kindles, or Nooks. We see, we see quite a bit of that where our students, so I think it helps them. We struggle daily with our technology until we really do have like a one-to-one type situation, particularly in the upper-level grades, where we can better allocate the resources that we do have to the lower grades. I mean, I do feel very fortunate as principal with the amount of resources that we do have in comparison to other principals that I talk with throughout the state. But it's one of those situations, Megan, where it's, on any given day, we just still don't feel like we have enough.
So I guess, is it fair to say, say you have, you feel that you could bank on like fifteen percent of your laptops coming from home? You, you can't make that assumption, and you don't when you look at the technology?
We don't. We look at it like, if, you know, if a student brings their iPad, or their own, you know, netbook, or laptop to school, that actually allows another resource to be given to another student. And my guess right now, it's probably, when you talk about laptops or iPads, it's probably about anywhere from five to ten percent of the population that's bringing those things in, with the exception of cell phones and, you know, iPod Touch is probably closer to eighty percent, eighty-five percent of our kids. Five through eight, when you get to the upper grades, seven to eight, it's probably closer to like ninety, ninety-five percent of our kids have cell phones, smartphones.
Okay. Thank you.
Ann.
Jim, could you? This is kind of a convoluted question. As we roll out the Common Core, and we've developed the assessment tools, or investment assessment tools, you've shared with us that that's going to require technology at our, at our fingertips. On page four, there's an increase in supplies of sixteen thousand seven hundred and five dollars. I see things for, that refer to whiteboards. So I guess my question is, is that cost for technology that we're going to need to do our assessments going to be on the technology, the IT budget, or is it going to be associated with each school? Because I'm seeing line items again for whiteboards or Promethean Board stuff. So I'm getting confused how we're breaking out technology.
So just a quick clarification, Jay, is the language that's underneath this current language, or is this language from last budget?
Some of it's from last budget year. Like, we don't have any technology budgeted in any of my lines. We've all agreed it's going to be through the, you know, the tech lines, so I'm sorry...
Jay, that's okay, that's the answer I needed, because I needed to answer this question, and it kind of goes down the path that Rob's going down, and really shows how interrelated all components of the budget are, because we kind of artificially separate things out, like the four principals being here, and the IT director not. And Rob's question and your question go right down the path of, of technology, and yet it's academic in terms of where we're going in terms of assessment. So Smarter Balance is coming online, not this next school year that we're budgeting for, but the year after. And Carolyn and I and the principals have been very deliberate about providing our teachers the skill set to be able to transition to Smarter Balance and Common Core as fluidly as possible. And I would say that, even saying that, we will have, you know, kinks as we roll out the work that we have to do in two years. Part of that is the star assessment that Jay piloted for the system, and, and as of next year, will be the universal screening tool we use. Part of, the two reasons why we chose that tool, one is that it is already aligned deliberately and purposefully to Common Core, and the second is it mostly mirrors what youngsters will have to do when we implement Smarter Balance, which means it's an online assessment. So assessment instruction, the last time I gave this answer, somebody said, what about instruction? But the Smarter Balance assessment system is going to drive our instruction issues. So I'll stop for a second and say, yay, Jay, for the work that he's done in being able to hook up kids from iPads to Nooks to Amazon Kindles to iPads to Chromebooks, all of that technology is in his building. So yay, Jay. But here's the problem with all of that technology being in his building. You can't implement Smarter Balance with fifteen different tools, because they have different operating systems, Android, Apple's, Microsoft's. They're different sizes, so you can imagine, you know, a seventh grader actually taking out their iPad Touch and doing an assessment. You know, they would probably be quite successful at it, we'd be cross-eyed in about five minutes. So, yeah, it's going to drive the instruction, the technology issues, and that'll be coming up when we talk to Josh and our plan for how do we get a universal assessment tool and universal expectations that goes to the heart of, can we have common expectations of our students? And the answer is yes, if we start using common devices. And so I'll leave that there as the teaser for the IT piece, but the answer to your, the short answer to your question, Ann, is yes. But more to come.
Tom.
This is probably a question for Sue, that for every school, we see no workman's compensation for two thousand and twelve, or approved for two thousand and thirteen, but you know, you see it appearing for every school for this year.
Because we moved it out of the district budget and put it into individual budgets.
I have two questions, line, first on line forty, contract service to other co-curricular, I guess. So for the current budget, you were approved eight thousand dollars, that's been taken out for the proposed. You expended about six hundred last year. And then there's some notes, and it says student enrichment's all grades, and that, and then something about earth balloon and visiting authors. I just wanted to understand, what is, is this a reallocation, or is this something that you're cutting?
Some of it's definitely a cut. For example, I've already talked with the social studies teachers, typically we brought in the earth balloon in grades, in grade six, so we do not plan to do that for next year. There's a variety of different reasons. We actually were unable to get those people to come in last year as well, so they didn't come last year, so we decided to get to remove that. And contract services, it's just a line that we've used historically, like if we wanted to hire a guest speaker, I guess it's just the terminology, contract services, people from outside of our school that we wanted to bring in to do some kind of activity.
So you have no funds allocated to do that?
No. We're not planning to do that for this upcoming year.
All right. My other question is farther down, under, after, number, numbers forty-nine through fifty-one, looks like you cut out some kind of after-school aid position, but...
Yeah, great question. That's for our homework, after-school homework program. We do that from Monday through Thursday. That's because we have a late bus, but we actually put that line in someplace else.
Okay.
You'll see in a line for, right on page, the first page, actually. Todd, myself, and Dr. Morse work together. Todd has a learning lab, so we're, again, trying to create the same kind of terminology in the schools. So we would pay for our after-school homework club through our learning lab line.
Okay, good.
I see, that's...
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
That after-school homework club is actually a very valuable club. I think someone had asked questions about computer usage, or what do we do for students that might not have computers at home? That's a great club, because we have access to computers in our library, so they're able to access, you know, have availability of all the resources down to school.
And there's a bus?
Yeah, we have a late bus. Good question.
Good catch. The idea is to try to standardize language in the budget, so that you aren't guessing what that stands for, or what, you know, what's happening at high school, not happening at the middle school, or vice versa.
Any other questions?
Moving right along.
Wow.
I have one, but I think it's probably obvious, as the coaches' stipends.
Yeah.
It's based on what was, not was it, what was expended in twenty twenty-three, but mostly on what was budgeted in twenty twelve?
Correct.
So it's just sort of gone back to what was budgeted.
It's simply contracts called for, Ann, so basically Ann, Sue just adds up all of the various coaches' stipends and all the stipends, and that's what hits that line.
But it wasn't expended in twenty twenty-three?
It may be that some positions were unfilled.
I see, oh, okay, that's just...
Sometimes we deliberately choose not to fill a position, because there aren't enough students who go out for a particular activity.
I have a question. Jay, do you bring in any volunteers to ever help with tutoring? You know, parent volunteers, or people who, you know, maybe are willing to help kids, maybe have some issues with reading, beyond, like maybe like at an after-school program or something like that?
We do, we have parents that volunteer, particularly during the school day, but like when you look at the stipends, like some, we have, I think you had asked earlier, do we stipend every single position? We don't. I mean, we also have a lot of great volunteers, like for example, my chess club, I have a volunteer that comes in every single Monday, that's an unpaid position, they do that. Lisa volunteer, she runs our bridge club every single Friday, and she doesn't get paid to do that, so there is some discrepancy in terms of, some of our people get paid for some of the activities after school, and some of our volunteers and staff don't, so it's, it's a little tricky. Ski club's another great example. So we have a lot of great volunteers, and how I fund those is, again, through my magazine fundraiser, you know, so if Lisa or volunteer needs funds for new chess pieces, or snacks, or those types of things, that's how I fund those, so it's not a budget item. But it, it's actually tricky stuff, because when you want to provide a lot of great activities for students after school, and we go from the budget process year to year, I can't predict next year, if I have students that want to do a, a new club, like newer ones like Destination Imagination, we hadn't budgeted for that.
Right.
We didn't have a stipend position for that at the time, so I reallocated a different position that we didn't fill. But again, the supplies and stuff, they're not budgeted, so it's, it can be kind of tricky.
Okay.
So fortunately, we have good volunteers that are willing to do those, create activities for kids for free.
Ann, thanks.
Yes.
Jay, on page seven, fourteen-twenty athletics. Where would we find in the budget, whatever expenses you have that are associated with athletics? I don't see anything here.
I'm sorry, what number was that again? Oh, fourteen-twenty?
Yeah, fourteen-twenty, it's athletics.
That, that was number forty-three.
Where are the associated expenses, athletic uniforms or equipment, or...
That's in here, Ann, someplace. It's like twelve thousand dollars. Where did I see that?
Is Corey break it down by sports and coaches?
I see it, it's number forty-one.
Number forty?
Forty-one has sports equipment.
Yeah.
Included in your extracurricular.
Okay, yes, yeah, thanks, Megan. Up on forty-one?
Yeah.
Contract services, non-education co-curricula, again, it's kind of quirky name for that line, but that's if we do need athletic uniforms. Something we've also moved to at the middle school, a lot of people really liked it, like for, for example, last year, we had the students buy their own basketball uniforms, and the kids get to keep them. So we're trying to move away from buying some of those things, so actually the kids get more frequent new uniforms.
Jay, where are the agenda books?
Well, the past, the past few years, we haven't purchased agenda books, and discussions with families and students, Todd actually budgets for the agenda books, so we tried to, again, work together, there's a potential we might buy agenda books this upcoming academic year, and work together on getting a good price. So we might not spend all that money, because depending on the needs of the students and teachers...
What do the agenda books do?
It's just like, they stay organized, but often they have a lot, a lot of good, a lot of good information in there, like capitals, mathematic, mathematical formulas.
The ones we have at the high school, we have the school handbook in front of it, and it's a basic, an agenda planner that, week by week, school year, the kids bring it to class, it's broken down by course. Theoretically, they all write their assignments in and bring it home.
That's what I wondered, yeah. So you just have fill-in-the-blanks there.
Right, right. So it's, it's, it is redundant on some level, in that most teachers now are also posting assignments online, so kids can also access it digitally that way. However... However, um, if you've worked with adolescents very long, you realize that having them write it down is, is important to them remembering to do it as anything. And, and we find that particularly kids that are struggling with organizational skills, the old-fashioned tried and true writing it out in your agenda book is actually one of the most efficient ways to get them to stay organized.
I have a question here, Anne.
Tying back in with athletics again.
Yeah.
Sue had done some research for us to tell us how much of our transportation budget was, was actually transporting children to athletics. And the number she came up with was $65,000. It was 3.4% of total transportation.
That's across the district.
Across the district.
Yeah.
I don't, so we don't break it out here. We're not breaking out, so the cost of this extracurricular and athletic programming is not, I mean, for, for the average person looking at this, there's a whole other part, which is getting kids there, which is, and so I'm wondering, we, uh, did we break that out on purpose? Was it?
It's a transportation cost, so it belongs in transportation, but nothing stops us from creating a summary document that captures the total cost of athletics and co-curricular at both buildings.
I think it's just important to know.
Sure.
Looking at the, again, in terms of equity from, from school to school, what we're spending at the elementary schools in terms of enrichment and athletics. Correct? And then it gets bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
And I think we need to understand that when we, as we move forward.
Yeah, sure. That dynamic happens across this state and across the country where what we spend for co-curricular work at the elementaries is miniscule compared to the middle school. The middle school is a very small portion of what we would spend at the high school, largely due to interscholastic activities and, and requirements put on high schools for, for that reason.
And what I, I believe what will be, um, important as we move forward with the Common Core and our assessment tool is recognizing where we're putting our resources and by, um, how we're investing them, and is it paying off? And for, what percentage are we investing in extracurricular and athletics versus what we're investing in our core curriculum, and how's it paying off?
Sure. We did a pretty intensive research study in my last job related to extracurricular, and what we discovered in my last job is that the youngsters who participate in co-curricular and extracurricular activities have a direct dividend benefit to their GPA. And it was almost a full point, which, you know, if you had a three, 3.0, it could kick you right up to a 4.0. The research nationally is incredibly powerful in terms of youngsters participating in both co-curricular and extracurricular activities. It's, it's an amazing piece of, of work, and I could get that for you, Anne, if that would help. But I think it helps communicate the importance of these activities.
That's why I asked.
I was not an athlete, but I would tell you that I'm a very strong athletic supporter. No smiles, Todd. And also, of course, my background in the arts. I'm very strong in supporting, um, all of these extra and co-curricular activities because the research is incredibly strong in terms of the relationship to getting kids to extend their school day by participating in these activities and their academic performance. So I'll get that for you, Anne.
I think it helps, alluding to what, what Marjorie was saying, is that how are we spending our money and how are we seeing the, the, the habit?
And I think getting Corey to capture the cost of our, our athletic program in a nice succinct way, so you could have it as a handout as opposed to a budget, budget document. And I, we can encourage him to do that and get that to you as well.
Thank you.
I have kind of a related question, which is probably not a question for either Todd or Jay, but kind of a question for both of them. And I don't know if this, this.
Are we on the high school now or?
No, but I, uh, it's kind of an all-inclusive question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the question to everybody at the same time, because I like that. Because I dressed as a witch, and that's what I'm gonna do. So anyway, um, with athletics, how much on average, and I don't expect anyone to know the answer to this question, by the way, um, do parents pay per athlete for their child to participate in athletics?
It'll change from sport to sport. I would tell you that ice hockey parents, having one sitting around the table, puts all, they put a lot of money into their athlete's, um, high school career. Other sports, um, not nearly as much. And it'll just range depending on what the school is supporting versus what they're not willing to support. Todd, other examples?
Well, I mean, I, part of it also ties into the history of how our sports programs have evolved. And, and a number of them, the more expensive programs, have been kind of gradually introduced to the community first as a club, then as a sport team with the idea that, it was understood that this is a high-cost activity and that some kind of fundraising and parental involvement was going to be there, which is why skiing, um, hockey, um, swimming has a fairly high rate of expense because you have to rent pool time. So there are a number of activities, and I could, there, I'm sure there are others, where it's just been part of the understanding that there was a recognition that we don't have an ice rink, we don't have a pool, um, so we don't have a ski slope. So that, so that there was going to have to be a, an element of cost taken on, and that was part of the initial agreement. Now, certainly, when things like that evolve over time, at any point, can you revisit the understandings? And absolutely you could. I mean, we could revisit whether or not the hockey program should be, and I'm not suggesting we do, believe me. But could we do that? Yes, we could. But it is, it is, when you ask, what's the average? The average cost by sport is dramatically different. I mean, being a cross-country runner all my life, um, I can tell you the average cost of cross-country is the $25 you probably pay for the singlet and whatever bus cost they transport a kid.
The $200, maybe.
Yeah, and the shoes here, yeah. But, I mean, so it's very small, whereas the average cost for hockey is going to be six, $800 just for the equipment, then you throw in the cost of ice time, and it's, it's, it's significant. And then throw in the fact that kids are growing and you're constantly, I mean, so it's just hard to compare those.
So what portion of, because I see in here for some, and I, I mean, my kids are little, so, you know, I don't have no idea what the answer to this question is. What percentage of like field or, I guess field isn't always the right term, but you know what I mean? Facilities costs is on the parents, and what percentage is in the district?
Again, that is a very, it would be very difficult to put an exact percentage on it at this point. What basically ends up happening is because the, the cost that, that running a hockey program, as an example, uh, is not a fixed cost. So until we know what the rate of ice time is going to be, you don't exactly know what the cost is going to be. And so basically, what we do is we budget a fixed amount to support ice time for the hockey programs. And then above and beyond that, that's, that's what gets handed off to the, the parent organization to either fundraise or write out a check to cover the difference.
Okay. So I guess my concern is, is that because some of sports are, and I will clarify, I'm not a hockey fan, nor do I ever want to be. My, I've been trying to convince my eight-year-old that he does not want to play hockey. But I, my concern always has been, and it's the same for youth, little sports as it is for big kid sports, is that we are allocating our resources heavily to certain places, which automatically creates a disadvantage for kids who want to play the alternate sports. So.
I, I do know that Corey works aggressively with the different boosters groups to try to create scholarship opportunities. So I happen to know, like, for example, in hockey, there's a couple of kids that, uh, that there's a scholarship to make it possible for them to be able to play. So we're not ignoring that aspect. It's just awfully hard to put a set number on it to budget for it as a future cost.
Okay.
Further questions?
Could I just, so were you saying that no child is turned away from an athletic program because of ability to pay?
I, it's, it's hard for me to say absolutely yes to that because I do think there is, there is, um, general knowledge in the community that some sports cost, um, more than others. And so I, I am concerned that there might be kids who might opt to not pursue it because they recognize that the cost might be prohibitive for their family, and they might choose to do an activity that's less expensive. And I do know that kids will do that. That being said, when a situation is brought to us, we do everything we can to make sure kids can participate fully. So we have, um, at least in my two years being involved in programs, we have not turned away a student from participation.
Thank you.
Okay. High school.
Question.
Are we on the high school?
We just.
Yeah.
Right before your eyes.
Excellent. Excellent.
I have a question about the high school.
Okay.
Okay, may I, okay. Um, item, line item 113.
113.
Summer curriculum work is going up. It's on page 10.
That's you, Carolyn.
I didn't know, I didn't know if it was Carolyn. I wasn't clear if it was something even related to summer school. I wasn't sure what it was, so.
It's, it is the line that, that would pay for, uh, contractually, um, when we have staff to do summer curriculum work, they've paid $150.
Right.
Per day, um, which was an increase in the last contract.
Okay.
And so we're anticipating, um, some continued curriculum work that is always done, but then obviously, there's a lot of the Common Core-related work that would take place. So that's why that would.
So that's a significant increase, is that?
It is, and it's on the assumption that we're gonna, uh, Carolyn, it is.
It's in line with the middle school. It also was brought in line with the middle school.
Right. Okay, is that?
One of the, one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that, um, there was some equity brought across the, um, schools for work to be done if they chose to over the summer. A lot of what's happening now is they're unpacking, doing projects, but I think a bulk of the teachers are looking to this summer to do more of the integrated planning where the schedules right now make it really hard to get together and do that, um, cross-curricular planning during the school day. So it's either after-school and before-school. And a lot of teachers use their summertime to really work on developing units of study without having a school day scheduled with students and planning.
Okay. All right. So may I follow up on that? So does that mean that there was, in the past, maybe during the, the school day, sometimes teachers were? Because I, I, I think it's good to have teachers with the kids as much as possible, the students.
Exactly. So what's being used now, and that's what's kind of limiting time, is they're using early release time, teachers' workdays, and I will say, early release, we've had, um, one in September. We'll have one in December. We have another one in February, so they're not, they feel like they come up quick when you're a parent.
Yeah, because you're, you're running out of.
But when you think about the time you, because by the time the kids, it's only a couple hours on those days. And then we have three, uh, all-day teacher workshops for the year. So if you think about it, that's 18 hours, those three workshop days, all day. And then you get a couple hours across six others, it's 12. So that's about 30 hours over the course of the year that we've carved out for dedicated teacher work to happen without kids, without having, you know, dedicated just for specific collegiality and conversations around Common Core. But yeah, I kind of, when I was a parent, I'm like, another early release? These happen like, I feel like.
Yeah, there were a lot.
But then when you look at the calendar, um, it really does equate to 30 hours and without hiring subs and, and trying to do that piece of trying to get people together. And we do recognize that we need to examine our schedules the way our, we are set up during the school year, that we don't have opportunities, especially at the elementary schools, to have a dedicated, um, common planning time that's dedicated once a week, so that it isn't always an early release and a carved-out teacher workday. That many school districts already have, um, common planning time at grade levels and across grade levels that they hold valuable and, and have had for a long time. This, the way our schedules have been, we have individual planning time, but we don't necessarily have common planning time dedicated for teachers at all schools. So that creates a, another layer.
Okay. I have three questions, so it's the first question.
You have to take a break.
You want me to take a break? I just figured I'd get my question out at once, and then you can, you know, call me.
Line item 169, page 14. Field trips, 5,303 were expended last year. I guess we didn't approve anything this year, and there's nothing but forthcoming?
Correct.
How's that working out?
I mean, the, the, the 5,303 was out of $6,900 that was budgeted the year before, based on $10 per, per student.
Okay.
And, um, although, you know, I, I guess $10 a student is better than no dollars per student. But for the most part, the trips and experiences that they're doing at the high school, they're, they tend to be more than that.
Right.
And it really, $10 was not sufficient to really make that great of a difference.
Okay.
I tended to use that more to subsidize, um, uh, kids who could not, um, didn't have the resources to pay. And I'm able to do that. I have a, another fund, which is called the enrichment fund, which is from revenues that I take in from either parking fees or other things that I can then use to defray some of those costs. So I'm able to do a lot of the same things I did with that line, except that it doesn't have to be.
Okay. Because I was just thinking, it doesn't seem very equitable.
Right. I mean, certainly, I would be open to conversation around us having a set number, but I will tell you that the, the, the types of trips, and actually, that we, um, where, it's kind of a balance of some of the trips that are done at the high school are more expensive. And then others are, we get, like, last week, we took, uh, 200 kids to go see the movie Bully, and we got a grant for that. It was fully paid for, everything covered by the grant. So would it cost, you know, 20 bucks a kid had we charged for it, but?
Where's, I'm sorry, where's the enrichment piece?
That's not, that's, that's a, an activity account that is separate. That's, it's not a, it's not a budgeted line.
Oh, I see, it's just bonus money from parking tickets and?
And, well, like, revenues.
Bonus money.
Revenues that come in, in this case, yeah, revenues from parking permit fees and that kind of.
Oh, okay. Okay, my last. I said three questions, Anne. One, two, I'm sticking to it. I, and I don't even know how to ask this question, but, um, one thing is about, I know some districts, and I know, Jim, you and I have spoken about this, in some districts, we, to incentivize students to take AP exams, sometimes a district will reimburse students after they've taken the exam based upon the scores they receive to kind of encourage participation. And I think it's relevant, especially to parents who, you know, AP, high AP scores often equates to college credit and can defray the cost of college down the road. And, but yeah, AP exams can be costly. So I wondered if you had any conversations maybe with your guidance team or, you know, your, your staff about maybe considering that as a program? I'm not saying we should budget it this year, but it's something to think about for the future, and it might help students.
The short answer is, I know I have not had a conversation specifically about, about whether that would be a worthwhile, um, thing to do. Last year, I think we had 160 AP exams taken. Um, I think it's $35 apiece.
Yeah, they're expensive, and I wonder how, by how many actual students, you know?
A hundred, there was a hundred students that took 160 exams approximately. So, um, so would it, would it increase if we offered that, possibly?
Yeah. I would be interested in getting some ideas about that and how much it would add to the budget.
Are you, are you familiar with any other schools that do it that way, or?
Meselhunski does it.
Done.
New Market did it.
New Market did it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I just know, I mean, I remember when I was in high school, it was, it was, I didn't take one of the exams. It was, I took two instead of three. I, you know, at that point, and.
So based, you're, you're suggesting having it based upon a cut score of a level of performance?
Well, that's one way to implement it, you know, I don't know. I mean, that would really kind of, I know, Jim, you told me that.
It's a scaled score.
It was a scaled type of thing.
Yeah, 100%, then 75%, 30%, and then if it wasn't a three, a better, it was zero.
So it's not like a blank check, you know, just go and give it a shot? I mean, you have to be.
Let's him resurrect it.
So I, I just think it might encourage, and I, it could be very helpful to many students on the road to have one.
I certainly can look into that.
Thank you. I'm done.
Just, uh, just an aside, a lot of schools don't accept AP courses. Be careful what you pay for. I just, I know because I'm in college business. But that's not my question. I'd like to ask a macro question. Governor Lynch has applied for an exemption from AYP, I believe, right? What impact will the granting of that exemption have on planning in the school district and by extension, the budget? Are there activities that now don't have to be undertaken because of that? Or is it, what, what impact, if any, does that have on? of that, or is it, what, what impact, if any, does that have on us?
I think that the shift, Common Core, for, for Carolyn and I, we, we have to pay attention to sending Denny to the point that we have to by state statute, but I think the conversation shifted with the state adopting Common Core, and we started right away in July with the administrative team paying far more attention to that initiative, knowing that the state had applied for a waiver, and the waiver really sort of puts that to the side as well, so I think it's, the Governor Lynch's application is, is being well-received by the, by the superintendents across the state, because it focuses on a growth model and Common Core, and so I think the cost that you're seeing in this budget related to contracted services in Carolyn's area that we just talked about is really the cost that we're seeing, we're spending less and less time on, on the old AYP paradigm, and more and more time on the Common Core, which we all believe in, so it's, it's, it's actually a positive development, and, you know, we're, I know, I can speak for the administrative team, we're pleased with the adoption by the state of Common Core, because it, it helps us articulate values and skill sets that are important to this district, and, and I think important to all school districts, so I think the, the answer to your question is, we're paying very little to the old paradigm and paying a lot more attention to the new, and that's where we're putting our resources.
Thank you.
I think what we're doing is looking at making sure we have growth and putting in place things that allow us to see growth for every child, so it kind of takes away the AYP, just looking at those subgroups to making sure that even children that don't fall within those subgroups, we're making sure that each child in the district is making growth within a given year, where it puts the onus on making sure that we're looking at all individual children, and looking to make sure they make gains in a given year, and how do we, like, Dr. Morrison said, how do we ensure that all children are making growth, and it does take away from just honing in on special education, putting all our resources, or just honing in on low socioeconomic status, or just honing in on ESOL, it makes us look at the children as a whole, and individually, how we're making growth for, and meeting the individual children, and that's the model that makes us feel really good, so looking at where they came to us, where were they with the point that they arrived at at a grade level, and how do we have evidence to know that we've made growth for each child in that given year?
Anne Lane.
Well, I guess this isn't the time and place to have a discussion about AP and whether it suits our school or not, I had to object that both of my children took AP classes, they counted at both the institutions they're at, unfortunately, my second child wanted to take USAP history, it was cut from the curriculum, and it, it has affected him that he couldn't take it, but my first child took it, scored, it enabled him to recognize he wanted to be a history major, he is to this day, and he's doing exceedingly well, and it's not because of the AP class, but it certainly helped. I'm interested on page seven, at the top, where we, that's the bottom of page six, where we're paying contracted services, physical therapy for our athletes. I, I'm, I'm interested to understand why, my understanding is either that you have personal insurance, or you take school insurance, and so why do we have a line item paying for something that I would expect to be covered by either your school insurance or your personal insurance?
That actually is the cost of a contracted service of our athletic trainer that's, that is at all athletic events, and actually, the, the actual cost of the district is actually significantly less than, than it actually would cost for us to hire him independently. Basically, the deal is that he is, he is physically on the premises throughout all the athletic events, from, you know, he gets, arrives at school around 1:00 every afternoon, meets with kids in the training room to get them ready for after-school events, if they have a physical therapy or tapings that need to be done to get them ready for after-school sports, and then he's there to provide medical assistance throughout all of the practices and games every afternoon. I don't, I don't know the actual real cost of what it would be to hire a trainer to work for us for, basically works for us about 30 hours a week, all year round, but it's, it would be significantly more than what we're paying, basically, the rehab three sees it as an opportunity for them to connect with kids, and kids become more comfortable with that, and a number of kids do take advantage of working with Mike Feld as our trainer, to do some of their physical therapy that is being prescribed for them by their doctors, so it is, there is some benefit that's had there, but by and large, I think it's a net gain for the district, because we get that.
I wonder if that should show, be represented somehow differently, because what we're, what we're getting is, it is contracted services, it's not here that, because how it reads is, it looks like a student has hurt themselves, and so they're getting something versus, it's proactive, it's not proactive as it is.
Right, yeah, he does like all the concussion screenings at the beginning of every season, so that we have baseline data.
And I'm grateful that you're, you're doing it in this way, because it's an employee that I don't have to pay benefits to, and so I'm grateful for that, thank you.
So you're thinking the title isn't.
It's confusing.
So it's line 64?
Yes, just so that.
It was 65.
Elaborate, so that it made it 64 and, yeah, 64.
We changed it, we changed it down from 64, the old description said represents the cost of contracting with rehab three for athletic training services.
Yeah.
Then we dropped that description when we moved it down to contracted services rehab three, so maybe we just need to plug that description in.
Thanks, Anne.
And one more question further down, item, Krista actually caught this, do you want me to share?
No, go ahead.
Okay, 68 and line 71, that we approved 19,800, and we spent 33,587, and number 71, we approved 12,3, and we spent 27,8, can you explain?
You, this, this is not your tenure, this was prior to your arriving, but if you could.
One of the things, you may recall, last year, I, I attempted to bring some rationality to the, the athletic budget lines, because two years ago, when I came in, basically everything was taken out of the supply line, and it was just everything, the rehab three, it was just, and so it was very difficult to try to break it out, and so I, in my inexperienced manner, attempted to reorganize those lines to be more accurate in reflecting the real costs of what we were doing for athletic expenditures, and as Corey has had the opportunity to be on for a year, he's actually been able to track it even better, and so the, the, I, certainly, ideally, we would be more consistent, but we are trying to make sure that what we're requesting matches up with the intent of each line, so some of those discrepancies are just, you know.
Corrections?
Corrections, yeah, for, for just guesswork that I did based upon past practice that turned out to be not entirely accurate, so we're trying to become, I think you'll find, moving forward, that those lines will be much more consistent, and you won't see the ups and downs the same way, you can quote me on that next year when I come back.
Anne.
I'd like to ask a question about the fact that the video production is, I was thinking about technology, and I see it in various spots, and I know we had a discussion last year in the budget about the $40,000 or whatever that was allocated, has that been put back in in some other fashion, or?
The, the actual, the, the actual dollars being spent on video production and, and, you know, school board production and video-related work for the district have not changed, it's just simply, it's been put into the high school budget as a simpler way of tracking, since Kathleen Young spent all of her time here, I would be the most logical person to be able to track and know what she's, she's doing, so it's just, it's an intent, we did the same thing with some of the auditorium manager's position, as well as our audiovisual technician position, we're putting all here because the work is done here in this building, and although some of it is district-related responsibility, it just made sense to have it managed here.
Not disagreeing with that, I think that my only question was related, was there anything different in the programming that she's doing?
Oh, the, the only change in the programming, what, related to presentation, we did make a change last year to reconfigure for the same dollars the position, so that we added, hopefully you've all seen it, OR TV News is now on cable channel 22, it's going to be a bi-weekly program, and the intent was to try to include district-related programming and make it something that would be more informative of the district, so it would be taking the responsibility that Kathleen has always had to try to provide that content, and then combining it with an educational experience so that students were involved in the production of it, so our, our goal long-term is to, to try to fuse those purposes, so that we get kids being trained and learning and getting opportunities to do some fairly high-end video production work, at the same time, doing some service to the district that allows the community to know better what's going on in all our schools.
Is that a particular line in here broken out that way, or is it just sort of integrated?
It's all, it's all integrated into.
So the programming is not sort of handled?
No, it's not, it's, there's, so basically what has happened is the cost associated with video production has been shifted into the high school in a variety of different lines, and it's, we have been working to try to simplify, but one of the things that I think this district is great at, at jumping and, and doing things to really expand progress, but sometimes the rationales and the way we piece together positions is rather convoluted, and I'm trying to be as polite as I can be, so you have positions that, like, a person is working in this capacity, and they're getting paid X rate, and it's defined in this way, and then the same person goes next door and does a different task, and suddenly their position is factored a different way, they're an hourly rate or a salary, and it just is very challenging, so what we're trying to do is to bring some rationality to it, and I can't say we've gotten there yet, but we're trying to be more consistent in that way, so that you can say, what does this person do, and say, here's what they do.
Any other questions?
Um, I do. Just a quick one. I, it's my third question.
You're so competitive.
I'll just think of another one. Todd, on page eight, line 94.
I want to thank Sue for putting the numbers on these lines, last year we didn't have numbers, and as I put eyes across, you can say number 94, that's just wonderful.
Oh, you had to look at the 5, 2, 1, 4, 0, 2.
So between 93 and 94, is that essentially a wash, is that the same, the same skills that we just changed, and/or if it isn't, I'm, I'm happy you have that individual there doing that work, and I wonder with the SRO officer, is there any, do they have any interface?
Yes, yes, they do have interface, and the, the number that is in here for, for, for next year, it is, it's combining a couple of things into one contracted services guidance line, it's basically taking the actual expense that we had for the drug and alcohol counselor, combining that with the cost of Naviance, and, and that's where 13-8 comes from, tacking on a few hundred dollars to give us a little bit of wiggle room there, so that, that 13-8 reflects the actual cost of Naviance and our licensed drug and alcohol counselor, they're just combined into one line.
So you're licensed drug, so they're, they're working 12 hours a week?
Correct.
At $45 an hour?
Correct.
Are we, is that enough?
He is busy, he is spending, certainly those 12 hours get utilized, and it's not just court-ordered, or, or.
Well, I would like more proactive work.
Right, right, and I, and I think, so we're, we're trying to utilize him better, but yeah, he's, he's definitely busy, I think for now, I think that, that is enough.
It's not an area I want you to skimp.
And nor do I, because I think it's, it is very important to make sure we're providing supports to students with drug and alcohol issues, no doubt about it, and I, I'll, just to give you a preview, I will be doing the first behavior survey presentation at next week's board meeting, and there's a number of things in there that I'll bring up relevant to that, and so there's no question that this is a position, we're, we're actually very fortunate, most high schools do not have a licensed drug and alcohol counselor, one of the things that it does, that you asked about the SRO position, one of the things that allows us to do is to deal with things without necessarily having to criminalize the behavior, and I think that is often what, what challenges us in being able to help kids to get back on track, and one of the things that the SRO and the, and the lead act counselor working together can do is they can take many of the steps that a court might order in the event a student comes into contact with a drug or alcohol-related offense, without having to have to go to court and have it become part of our court criminal record, we can set up a diversion contract that will involve a series of steps that this, the student is required to take, part of it involves meeting with our SRO to, on a regular basis, sort of in a similar role as a probation officer, but then another part of that is meeting with the lead act counselor to deal with the substance abuse issues, so that in the end, we can more comprehensively address it, and I think it works pretty well for what we're able to do, I agree with you though, you know, it's, sadly, is a need that, that probably is more of than we're aware of, and certainly as time goes on, I wouldn't hesitate to come back and say, hey, you know, we have need for more of this service, right now, we're, we feel fairly confident that we're able to provide the service we need with that.
Just a question for Jay, does, is there any interface between the two schools with this counselor, do you have the use of this counselor or do you?
That's a great question, Anne, historically, a few years back, we had an issue, so then I called upon the high school to see if we could get some support, and they did provide that, but as of the past couple of years, again, fortunately, we haven't had that need, so, but I, you know, if there was ever an issue with one of our students, and I needed to call upon Todd and that person, we would do so and have done that in the past, but that was a few years ago.
Does, does the person have that flexibility in, in terms of how they're contracted, does it, you know, this?
Basically, the way it works, he's a, obviously a licensed drug and alcohol counselor, and he does have other functions that he serves elsewhere, so we basically contract him every Thursday and Friday, so he's with us all day, Thursday and Friday, every week.
Okay, thank you.
Just one, I get my second question.
Agreed.
And this, and I think I remember you saying this, but all the graduation expenses are now included in high school?
Thank you for bringing that up, that I didn't want to mention, yeah, there's been a lot of discussion around the fundraising we ask our students to do with regards to graduation, and I often hear people say, why do we have our senior class spend all this time fundraising for a tent, because the reality is, our graduation, we, we choose to have it outside because we like that venue, it's a, it's a wonderful place, and anybody who's been to graduation knows it's a wonderful way to do it, and we'd love to keep doing it, however, to put that burden on our students, I, I, I've never felt comfortable with it, because it puts a real pressure to fundraise, and so basically seniors have been asked to fundraise $6,000 to cover the cost of that tent, what I did in this year's budget was fully fund graduation, so there is a line now called graduation expenses, what number is it again?
It's 156.
156, the, there's $10,000 there that covers the.
And $3,000 there, so.
Right, the $10,000 there covers the cost of the tent, staging, all the, the sound system that we rent from UNH to make it all happen outside, flowers, those things to make it a nice event, and then the $3,000, which is in, refresh my memory what line that is?
I just picked that elsewhere.
That actually is under contracted services, and we do have. That, that, that's, we, we do have costs, and actually, $3,000 is probably on the high end, costs associated with technicians and so forth that set up and, and do all the, the legwork of setting up all of that, that equipment to make it happen, so the grand total for the cost of graduations is $13,000, typically, it's actually more like $12,000, but that gives us a little bit of wiggle room.
Todd, of the, the, when I was in the 80s, when I was in legislation, parents called me all the time because their kids are OD'd, and all kinds of things, and I was shocked at the naivete of the parents, the presence of the scratches on mirrors, the 20 kids gathered at the house across the street from the high school, they weren't studying, what was I going to do about it? What was I going to do about it? Has the naivete of parents improved? Do you do education programs for parents as to what they're for? And I'm not, boy, I'm not blaming the parents. I understand...
Right. I mean, certainly, I think, there's no question that...
Especially in Durham, by the way, because there are a real market for the very sophisticated dealer networks that are now dealing off the cotton. I deal with this all the time at my school. Do you still have dilemma with the parents? Because a major cause of drug abuse at the time was parent indifference to what was going on. With all due respect to my friends and me. Do you?
I mean, I hesitate to generalize parents as a whole unit. Do we deal with issues that we wish we could get more parental involvement in? I mean, absolutely. Do I, but in terms of just community consciousness of issues relating to drug and alcohol abuse, I think there is an awareness of issues. And I have generally had the experience, when I've had to call a parent and get them involved, parents are generally quite happy to have someone bring them into the equation to kind of help solve the problem. And I think certainly, if addressing the issue is purely punitive, there's no question that, you know, I think parents often balk at the notion that, you know, that this is going to become a part of a criminal record or those kind of things. And I think there's no question that that's still a delicate line to try to go down. But if, and I've already given you the heads up that next week, I'm going to be doing a presentation on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, but one of the things that does come through that is a very clear sense from kids that they know what their parents believe. And they are, generally speaking, kids are aware that their parents do not want them to be doing these things. Like, we're talking like 87% to 90% of kids say, yeah, I know where my parents stand on this, and they wouldn't be happy if I did it. Now, does that change behavior? Not entirely. But I think there is a general sense from, I think parents in this community, generally speaking, I know I said I wouldn't generalize, but I think parents in this community are generally pretty responsive and responsible. Do we have issues that, there's no question that sometimes I shake my head and say, are you kidding me? You know, like hosting a party that everybody knew what was going on, the kids all knew, how could a parent not know? Know that kind of thing. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I look forward to the survey. That's good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion to adjourn. We need a motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh, it's all excited. We don't have to.
Just a work job. No, take it.